Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 14th meeting. I'll ask Clayton, Chief Clayton Murphy, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah. Sorry about that. Nobody said anything about the flag. That'd be a bad spot. You need help?
Good.
All right.
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 For a special event, use the turf field for a water balloon fight and a pep rally. Here we go again with the pep rally, huh? Titans football and the cheer program. They've done this in the past and everybody seems to be okay with it, so I'll ask for a motion. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're gonna contact the fire department that they're on site, correct? Yes? Fire department will be on site?
For the pep rally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Michael. Next, the six B, fire headquarters. They're also getting HVAC system. Fire department has requested additional HVAC for both the computer room and the treasurer's office. They got a windows, undersized, inefficient window unit. And they're requesting authorization to contract to have eight thousand dollar, two split units installed for the facility. I mean, they're just wasting money with those things running, so something has to be done right. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, seven, one or two, so seven, agenda seven. Sabina Hornigan Harris, Harrison is resigning from her position as police communication operator. She's incurred time amount owed is one thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's Nathan Moskowitz also has resigned from his position as a neighborhood aide part-time. And he is owed two hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. Is this a crossing guard, Brian?
He's a part-time neighborhood aide.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Next on the agenda is Lynn Manischistic's vacancy. The board has requested to authorize the hiring of Kerry Matthews as a full-time typist clerk in the Department of Public Works, as requested by Mr. Healy. Over Kerry. Okay, then we're gonna have a vacancy in Village Hall for a part-time person. And we have Lisa Katz will be taking her position at Village Hall in nineteen and a half hours. Motion to accept both?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I do, grab the other one?
We have two lifeguards.
Is another add-on?
No, it was on the, the staffing one on the back.
Yeah. I think the fourth page, that's, that's, what did I grab wrong here? No, it's right in front of me, alright. Staffing. Request for the following lifeguards, one seasonal to be hired for the summer 2025, Daniel Corano and Melanie Proppa for lifeguards. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Why does it say two on there? Okay. We got nine A. Grant application. This is the hiring grant from the police. Did you write this? Did you, uh?
I sort of came in and I forwarded over.
Yeah.
It's a police grant.
Right.
To hire, you know, new officers, so with potential retirements, I figured, you know, we could get a chance to, whether we get it or not, it's another story.
From Congress, this is a, the cops hiring program is a competitive grant program that provides federal funding directly to the state and local law enforcement agencies to hire police officers and help increase public safety and crime. The grant helps bring our tech stylists back to Long Island to help keep us safe. If we do not apply for opportunities like this, we lose them, other areas get them, so this is a no-brainer as far as, I'm sorry. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is from S V S. This is requested from Ben Trishell and Lisa Kenny, the village assessor. It's a, for a proposal for appraisal and consulting services. These fees have not changed since our firm was first engaged by the village in 2009. That's surprising. We've used them in the past and they worked out fine, right, John?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Limbrook TV, I guess this is from Tony Ansh, he's looking to get a contract made for Tyler Stazak as a camera, he has camera experience and he could be used on Limbrook TV. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She's the one saying, no, and then the recyc, oh, this is Mr. Healy, maybe, is requested to approve one-year extension for disposable of our recyclables with a CPA increase of three percent beginning August 1st. The per ton increase would be from a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty cents per ton, realizing an increase of four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven and eighteen cents based upon a three-year average. It is noteworthy to mention that our outreach program, we've have decreased our recyclable tonnage from the previous year of one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two tons to the current year of one thousand, two hundred and fifty-one tons, realizing a year savings of seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy, seventy cents. And I would recommend continuing the outreach program because that's good savings. We're doing, going in the right direction, making people aware of what's recyclable and what's not. So, a motion to take the one-year extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy, if you could for a minute, what do we do then?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What do we do then after the one-year extension? I mean, a year goes by very fast.
It sure does. That three-year contract flew by, you know? So what, gives us time to develop new big documents for the contract for all our recyclables and solid waste that we have to deal with next year. We have several contracts coming up next year we have to renew.
Do our recyclables go to Covanta?
It goes to, our recyclables go to Omni, the vendor that we use by our solid waste management plant.
Right.
And our other household waste goes to Covanta, rerode now.
Well, I don't know if it's called Covanta anymore, right?
Yeah, Covanta, no more Covanta.
Alright.
And we intend to, I know we did, we're very successful with our recycling outreach we did so far, and I think we have another venture to do, to show, we're taking, gonna take our recycling to the street, you know, so it's gonna be a pail-by-pail analysis of what people are putting out, so that should be a fun presentation also.
That would be good. That'd be interesting to see how people are throwing the wrong thing.
Yeah, just pails by pails and my co-star that was with me on it and, we're gonna go house to house to see what people have in their pails.
Once again, could you tell the people what happens to those pieces that are not recyclable? That it costs us more money?
Yeah, so, you know, you don't think plastics, lycra plastics really contribute to a lot of weight of stuff, but we get charged by the tonnage at, when we deliver our recyclables. So eliminating the wrong plastics from that tonnage, that more expensive tonnage, to divert them to where they should go saves us weight, so. That extra little vitamin container that everybody throws in recycling, which is not a recyclable product, we have to pay for that one way or another. So, put it in the right place, it saves us a little money and, you know, the vendor that we deliver to sorts it, he doesn't have to use all that labor to, at least for our trash, you know?
Right.
So we try to keep it to that.
So if everybody does, says, does the same?
Number one and number two plastics, you know, tin cans, soup cans, things like that, aluminum foil that's clean, those are all good stuff. The other thing else can go somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 10, transfer of funds. The board has requested to ratify the temporary transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital fund and approve a transfer from the capital fund back to the general fund. Approve as listed on the, on the work order here? Any issues? Any questions?
Uh-uh.
No.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then the bills.
I move that the bills listed on the abstract of ordered vouchers be paid as soon as they have been duly audited by the majority.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we're into good and welfare. Anne Marie?
I'm just gonna, you know, I wanna continue on what trustee Habert and Batia were saying before, you know, congratulating our fire department, our police department, even our, you know, our other village services, DPW, rec department, you know, it's been a very hot summer, and there's been a lot of, you know, things going on and a lot of events, but you know what? It is really nice to bring people in, to be honored, to show the community that they are working hard, that they are looking out for us and they always have our backing, you know, I very much, as Rob said, you go to sleep at night and you think everything's okay and they're getting up all night long, you know, helping all of our residents, so it very much appreciated if you see them in the street, thank them, because it really is not always easy work, but we are appreciative of all the departments. I know myself as a resident watching them just work really hard in the summer, I mean, all year round, but particularly when it's very hot, it's not always easy, so I wanna thank everyone and appreciate it and enjoy the rest of your summer because it's going fast. It's a bummer, going too fast.
It always does, summer always does. Stephanie May.
Thank you. Also, again, thank you to the, you know, fire department ambulance corps who were here tonight for the, you know, terrific rescue that they did. You know, we forget that these people are volunteers, you know, they come out of their homes, as was pointed out, all hours of the night, all times of the day, to, you know, address a concern, and, you know, when you're calling them, it's, it's not a good time. There's a problem that's being, you know, that you have that you need to resolve, and, you know, they're professional, they, they come to your home, make you feel at ease, but again, they, they know what they're doing to resolve the issue at hands, and, you know, we can't be thankful enough, you know, that, that we have these volunteers in our village, and, you know, it's just amazing that people, you know, continue to come out, continue to volunteer to do this and help our village, so we thank them for that. You know, it is, as trustee Ritten pointed out, it is the summer, so if you're looking for activities for your, your kids, you know, there's a number of different activities at a rec center, you know, take a look at the different, different offerings they have, the pool, between the rec center and the pool, and also the library. The library has a ton of different offerings between, you know, weekly movies and other different events, they have museum passes, you know, you're looking to go to the Intrepid, you're looking to go to, you know, some of the local museums here on Long Island, they have few free passes, so, you know, contact the library to reserve those pass, whereas it's an Empire State pass to go to the beach in this hot weather. Whatever it is, just contact the library and reserve those passes. Additionally, you know, they continued the program this year where they're selling at a discount, passes to Adventureland, passes, you know, to Adventure Park, and, you know, passes to, you know, Wet n Wild. So, you know, take a look at and see if you, if you're gonna do those with your kids, you know, you could buy these tickets at a significant discount through our library rather than paying at the, at the site there, so, again, enjoy your summer, stay cool, and, you know, we hope everyone has a great summer. Thank you.
Those passes are cash, right?
Cash only.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, just, there are a lot of activities that are being set up, at the rec center, so definitely check them out, as Mike had said. Also want to congratulate the Titans organization, football that is, for successful carnival again this year, and thank you for the police department for their efforts. I don't, I don't think there were any issues this year, is that correct, chief?
Yes.
So we thanked everybody who made that a successful program. I know they expanded the rides again this year, we've got a lot of good feedback from the residents, so that's always good to see. I'll just say the same, enjoy your summer, be safe, please slow down, we'll keep that as the same mantra we've been doing for the last several board meetings, but please slow down as there are a lot of kids out when you're driving around the neighborhood.
Followed with the chamber having the cruise nights down on Thursday. It's a great time to get out and to...
Just go ahead.
It's a great time to get out and, and go down to Atlantic Avenue, get to look at the old and the fancy cars out there, but you could also support the local businesses down there. It's a great way to, to, to support your community. And to go back to what everybody said about, especially this month with the hot weather, the summer weather with the thunderstorms and, and the July 4th with the fireworks, the fire department, the police department, as well as our DPW with trees down and everything else, really do a great job. On July 4th, our, our police department, some of our officers responded to what some might think was a routine call, and they actually made an arrest with a firearm recovered, just to show what our guys and our girls are out there doing. So, be thankful for them and I appreciate all the work they do, not only them, but all our village employees. Everybody have a great, safe summer.
Thank you. I have a few comments too. I'm going back to driving through the village. We are an incorporated village and our side streets have children playing on them. To have people racing through our streets is unacceptable, and the chief and I have been talking about what we're gonna do. Well, we haven't come to a decision yet, the chief is working on it, but we're not gonna tolerate anybody speeding through our streets. So beware that the police are paying attention to those people that drive around our village at excessive speed. We're just not gonna stand for it anymore, it's too dangerous with the kids playing in the street, and, and it's just wrong for a village to be, have reckless people come through it like, driving like nuts. I'm asking everyone, pay attention to your driving, act, act, slow down, take your time, there's no need to rush through the side streets. We do have main thoroughfares, I understand we drive a little bit faster on Merrick Road and like Hempstead Avenue, but even that, those are thirty mile an hour roads, especially around schools and things like that. Pay attention to what's going around your surroundings, there's kids out there. I mean, for someone to come around a, a corner so fast, the tires are squeaking and there's kids playing there, there's no way he's stopping. So I'm asking everyone, pass the word around, please slow down, of course the village board is not gonna tolerate it, and we're gonna ask the police department to enforce it. That being said, we have Swim Across America on 7/25, and Thursday night, as I mentioned earlier, they call it cruise night down now at the chamber, and the chamber's having also live music down, down at the, on Atlantic Avenue where they shut the street down, and they had it last Thursday, it was nice. I believe that this week will be a little bit more attended, and let's come down and have, see your neighbors and have some fun. With that, I'll open it up to the floor, Mr. Greenfield. I didn't mention the golf outing just because I know you wanna talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're talking about activities for the summer, the highlight of the summer is your mayor's golf outing, August 11th at the Inwood Country Club. I'm excited to stand here tonight to make an announcement that I never thought I was gonna do thirty days ago when I was very nervous at the numbers. We are sold out at the Inwood Club. However, we have availability for at least four foursomes at the Seawayne Country Club, and it's the same price, just starts a half hour earlier, and then the dinner follows at Inwood. And we have availability of dinner, tickets, people that wanna come for dinner only, and you could go online and sign up through the village website as well as the golf outing website. But what we really need is some more donations from the community, from the business community, anyone in the community for the raffles. We're so far light on that, we're gonna focus now in the next thirty days to the event on putting a spectacular raffle together. Last year, the number one raffle item was the pizza oven, and...
Who wanted the pizza oven last year?
I don't...
Yeah, who, no, who wants it? Who wanted it the most last year?
Who wanted it, Mayor?
You did.
No, 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 I'm allergic to home cooking. A lot of people wanted the, the pizza oven.
Actually, I think most people wanted the Brian Palladino shirts.
We were considering the committee initiating a new award this year for the best dressed foursome, and especially since the chief says he can't make it this year, he has a family obligation, so now we're open up to a lot of other people to come dressed, if the, the foursome dresses alike, we're gonna consider that. Now, I have my hot dog shirt ready for the event that day. One of the features is the Hebrew National Hot Dogs at the halfway house, they're gonna be at both courses, we're gonna have a car at each courses, we're gonna duplicate each courses' activities, and then we go back to a very nice dinner at the Inwood Club.
And maybe you should remind people why we're doing two clubs?
Yes, Mayor. The, the donations go to, and they have in the past, to the Limbrook Community Chest, and we also gave to our two veterans groups, and we were able to, last year, increase the amount of money because of the generosity of the business community as well as those in attendance, and our coach chairs in this effort, the Limbrook Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce has been very active this year on the committee, and I'm appreciative of that, and I look forward to them coming through for some donations. Things we're looking for that people like, and you don't have to be a business to have it, but tickets to events, people go very big on that. We're also gonna try to focus on getting gift cards to local establishments because people like that also. And we're gonna have golf, we, we've had very generous donations from Dave Baker through his vendors, McGorries is one of our honorees, and we have at least four golf bags from him. People like golf bags, and we'll put in a different club in each golf bag to try to distinguish it, and then you'll decide which one you wanna take. We're gonna mix up the prizes this year, and we're gonna try to put together some nice packages with respect to that, and we, we look forward to an exciting day, as always, on the links, an exciting dinner, and a presentation to our three honorees. I mentioned Dave Baker and his team, and McGorries, and all his restaurants are in big. The superintendent of schools, and our own honorary participant over years, Cindy Shreiner. So, Dr. Lynch has been very good about it, and we gotta, need a little more participation if you're out there from the school community, we'd like to see a little more participation from the school community.
Thank you.
Okay. Look forward to seeing everyone on the day of the event.
It's a nice event, it's a lot of fun.
And between now and that date, I'll be praying for good weather, don't worry.
Just to piggyback on what the fire department had done earlier, I, we have our own awards committee and whatnot, I just wanted to recognize Officer Moon and Officer James were the police officers that night, and, you know, they, they always talk about a witness arrest, and that was what happened that night, you know, she, she was feeling agita, called the son and they called the police department, and they, they were all sitting at the house, and then she just went out. So, it couldn't be a better circumstance to have police officers with a, you know, an AED and CPR trained right nearby. We got a beautiful thank you note from their family, I just wanna highlight, she said, your officers, Lieutenant Cunningham took the call on the phone, and then Officer Moon and Officer James demonstrated remarkable professionalism and skill as they utilized the AED, successfully shocking her many, multiple times collaborating with the Limbrook Fire Department Medical Company and Northwell Services for your continued lifesaving messages, measures. So, just wanted to say, you know, thank you to Officer Moon and James, they already been on lifesaving. One thing further, we haven't made it too public yet, we wanted to get past stuff, but I just wanted to mention, we have a member, Jeremy, Jerry Quinlan, his daughter Erin is suffering from leukemia. They, they've gotten great medical care and all that, his wife really has stopped working since then, so we are gonna hold a fundraiser for him on October 11th, but it's gonna be at Monkehees in Wantaw. They've opened the doors to that and they, they asked what they could do, so if anything, we can mark that on the calendar, October 11th, I don't have the times yet, but just to save the date, I'll follow up on more stuff. And to reiterate on what you were talking about with speeding, it's a bane in my existence, you know, I, I, you know, you, you sit there on, you know, the side roads, as the world gets more crowded, as the village gets more crowded, people find little shortcuts and things to do, and ways to get around traffic, and that's what's impeding a lot on, you know, on, on the safety on our side streets especially, and the speeds on the, on the main roads. I mean, we're out there, we're writing speeding tickets and pounding cars, I mean, it's, it's all being done. Our crashes have reduced, but still, there are the crashes that don't happen, the near misses that never get reported, and that, that would be a lot better if that all went away, so to reiterate what the mayor said, slow down, be safe, children are out there, a lot of people on bikes, pedestrians, you know, I, daily, I turn on News 12 and there's another fatal auto accident on Long Island, and just don't wanna see that here anymore. We haven't had one this year, and I keep, hopefully we keep that pace, but thank you.
Thank the guys, the guys are doing a great job, Brian, thank you. Mr. Stanton, do you have anything for us?
I have this time.
Okay. Mr. Healy, you good?
I'm good.
Antonio?
I'm here.
Wanna talk about the summer?
Hello, everybody. I was just gonna give the, the dates for some of the stuff coming up at the park this summer. Starting next Sunday, is that next Sunday? Yeah, July 27th is country night at the park, it was a great event last year, so I'm really excited to do it again. Six to nine PM, there'll be food trucks, ice cream trucks, and lots of country music and dancing, so it's fun for the whole family, even if you don't dance, it's just fun to come sit and watch and just enjoy. And then after that, August 9th, we have family fun night at the pool for all pool members, that's from four to seven PM, we're gonna do like games and relay races, we have the DJ coming, and then that'll be followed by Matt Miser and the Highway Band at the gazebo, so some live music, food trucks, ice cream there as well. August 24th is second country night, same time, same deal with everything, and then to end the summer, August 29th, we have another band, two-set guys that are gonna do some classic pop type of, you know, Americana covers and things like that, food trucks and all of that fun stuff as well. So, just look at the rec calendar, all of those things are posted, and all the flyers are up between the Facebook and the Instagram as well.
Thank you.
So hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Mr. Healy, I know you could tell us...
Yes. What?
The new heater.
Yes, better late than ever, but we replaced the, the new, we got a new pool heater, I know we got one just last year or so, but there was a manufacturer defect in it, so we had that replaced on warranty. Now, testing it right now because the water's plenty, plenty warm, but...
What is the water temperature now?
Warm.
Would you say eighty?
Saving us a lot of, a lot of heating on it. Water's close to, in that area, close to eighty degrees, I bet, every bit of it.
Okay. Alright. So we're set when the weather gets colder?
We're, we're set for August, yes, we're ready for August, we always get that chill towards the afternoon in August, sun sets a little earlier, summer's worked its way out, sorry to say that, but...
It was a little tough for the beginning of the season for a lot of the residents because of the heater breaking, deciding to break down, and it's only, the last one lasted twenty years, twenty-five years?
Oh, that, the last one, that was a real workhorse, yeah, that same brand, just, I guess, something manufacturing changing or something.
And this was only a year and a half in it?
It, it had one season on it, so it was well within the warranty period, which is great, and they were able to get it in, get it out, we facilitated whatever we could, hauling it, getting it disconnected and dropping it in there for the plumber to work on. It went very well, so...
Alright, thank you very much for doing that. So anybody else, as far as the people that were upset about it being cold, I don't blame them, but we do have a heater, so we're ready for the season when it gets a little bit colder.
We're ready for...
We're not rushing to that colder season, though.
No, we'll be ready for the next twenty-five, I hope, too, also.
Okay. Keep your fingers crossed.
So the only other thing, horticulturally, we got some complaints about spotted lanternfly?
Oh, yes, there has been some complaints about...
Yes, so with it... Yes, so it's that time of year for the annual onslaught of spotted lanternflies in the trees and...
If you spot it, you step on it, what are you doing?
You gotta, you gotta swat them, squish them, stomp on them, any way you can. There's no real natural predator to it yet. Any way you can squish them and hose them down, move them along, disrupt their life cycle before they put their little egg masses into the trees.
Is there a timeframe with them as far as their life cycle?
So right now, I've noticed, especially you'll notice on your vegetable plants more than any kind of vines, grapes, cucumbers, things like, small black bug with white dots on it, sort of looks like a weevil, but it's not. And those, that's the nymph stage of it, getting ready to evolve into the gray, larger, pretty bug. It has the red and black wings and, very attractive looking bug, you know? But don't let that fool you. It's a sheep.
So in the little...
Wolf in sheep's clothing, yeah. And they don't really do anything when they're in adult stage, is the small feeding stages that they get into as the life cycle goes on. And in the fall, you'll see little mud masses on your trees, just scrape them off, just like we used to do for the gypsy moth way back when. You know, there's nothing else to defend the trees but us out there. They can't take care of themselves with this, even though they try with their sap and...
What was that movie, Lorax?
The Lorax, yes. Yes, it's allegedly speaking for them, but, you know, all I can say is, if we spot the fly, we stop the fly, okay?
There you go. Spot the fly, stop. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Okay.
Any other questions for anybody? With that, I'll make a motion to go to a work session. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.